In accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act, PL 1975, Chapter 231, adequate notice of this regular meeting of the Planning Board of the Township of Franklin has been provided. Fred, can you please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I don't see Sammy, but Mahir, Rebecca, and Mark will ask to be excused this evening. Councilman in Morrison?
Here.
Theodore Chase?
Here.
Robert LaCourte?
Here.
Sammy Shabon? Jennifer Ragnow?
Here.
Charles Brown?
Here.
Robert Thomas?
Here.
And Chairman Arcini?
Here. The minutes are going to be, for onyx, are going to be carried because, first of all, they only came out every other page, and second of all, we're going to need more time to review those to make sure they're accurate, so they'll be at the next meeting. We've got a resolution for the Jane Center in New Jersey, PLN 2300011. I'll make a motion to approve it.
Second.
Councilman in Morrison?
Yes.
Ted Chase?
Yes.
Robert LaCourte?
Yes.
Jennifer Ragnow?
Yes.
Robert Thomas?
Yes.
Chairman Arcini?
Yes, and let me add one thing. So, it's been brought to my attention that the Jane Center planted a whole bunch of shrubs, sort of right in the middle of the lawn, not really in like a landscaping board or anything like that, so that's their issue if they want to mull around all that. But that said, we asked for trees to screen the caretaker residents, and that's in this resolution, and for the landscaping to, you know, be, I think, according to their archway thing, add landscaping in the rest of the site. If their solution is to plant shrubs in the middle of the lawn, that's not a good solution. So, let's make sure they adhere to this.
Yeah, and just so the Board is aware, I, basically the condition of the Board's approval, part of it was that the applicant had to meet with me in the field with their landscape architect to finalize the plan, basically to maximize the screening to some of the neighbors. So, we did that, and they submitted an updated plan to me. I haven't seen what they've done so far. All I can say is the plans are what they are. They have to plant what's on those plans. I can only guess that they're some portion of the way through. So, at the end of the day, they will absolutely have to put in the field what's on those plans.
I just want to make you aware of that, because it may not be off to a flying start, which is no surprise. Let's see, extension of approval, BSR EP3 Logistics Acquisition LLC. Anybody here representing that? No, okay. So, I don't know what they want. They want a year, they want a...
They wanted a year, I think.
I mean, give them a year. Is this, how many is this? It's a 22-dated plan?
It's a 22-date, so it's the original two-year period, firing, so this is their first.
Okay, thanks, Peter.
You got it.
Helpful. I'll make a motion for a year. What's with the actual date?
It will expire on July 20, 2025, if you were to extend it.
All right, let's do that.
Second.
Councilman in Morrison?
Yes.
Theodore Chase?
Yes.
Robert LaCourte?
Yes.
Jennifer Ragnow?
Yes.
Charles Brown?
Yes.
Robert Thomas?
Yes.
Chairman Arcini?
Yes. BOE Capital? What's that? And do we have somebody? It says presentation?
Yes.
Oh. Okay. Yeah, can you come up and use the microphone, please?
Can I just do HDMI, please?
You can, not only steal it, you can have it.
Well, I'd just borrow.
Oh, I thought you meant the mic, okay. That too. The other one, you can only borrow.
I would be answering a lot of questions. I have the microphone.
All right. Thank you very much for having me. I am Tammy Stachko. I am principal at SSP Architects, and we are the Architect of Record for the Board of Education. So, I've been asked to come here this evening and give you the presentation and an update as to the capital project for Zoo Fall Health Center. They've, I know Dr. Avali and Fran Palm from Zoo Fall Health have been in front of the council, and we've had a lot of internal meetings, but this is just an update as to what is happening. So, Zoo Fall Health is currently working out of a mobile van at Hillcrest, and I believe they're in the parking lot of Hillcrest right now. So, we are working with the Board of Ed to put a permanent facility for Zoo Fall Health Center in the top-left corner over the tennis court at Franklin Middle School, the Hamilton Street complex. So, this is the location that we're looking at. The work involves removing the tennis courts, so we're actually going to be reducing the impervious surface. We're putting in the building there. What you're seeing going up the left side is Burger Street. The road going down below the property that you're seeing is the parking lot of the middle school, currently underutilized, so the school has no problems letting that back part of the parking lot be utilized for the clients of Zoo Fall Health. And being right off of the back of the parking lot, it actually keeps the traffic going in and out of Zoo Fall away from the school, the children and the school activities. So, this was a very good solution to what we were looking at. This is going to be built off of modular construction and then site work bid, so they're going to do the site work, connect the utilities. We're bringing utilities off of Burger Street, connecting into the building, and then the four pieces of modular building are going to be constructed on top of the footings and foundation. And what you're seeing here is a 3300 square feet plus or minus community health center that is housing, we're a little upside down, I'm sorry about that. So, the ramps on the top, the ramps and the stairs on the top of the screen is where they'll be accessing from the parking lot. So, that'll be the main entrance coming off of the parking lot. The clients will come down into the lobby area with reception. There are three medical exam rooms, three dental rooms, a procedure room. Then they have the typical phlebotomy consultation room, the sterilization, everything that is required by the Department of Health. We've been through the preliminary Department of Health review, and we are doing the final Department of Health submission. I believe that's going out this week. So, that is Zoo Fall in a nutshell. If there are any questions, you'd be happy to answer them.
And this serves the student population of...
This serves the student population of anybody within Franklin Township schools. Zoo Fall got the initial grant to be in this specific area at Hillcrest, just because this is an underserved community. So, what Zoo Fall does is a sliding scale of payment, and they really target the underserved community, getting medical in there. And I believe they're, especially with it coming outside of the school, they will work to increase their hours, and the conversations, if I'm correct, Councilman Rahm, is that they would open to the community and anybody within the community that has a need for that sliding scale healthcare.
That's great, and you're also still fairly, quite close to Hillcrest, so you'd still be able to easily serve that population as well.
I think they're serving all their students, so the school is actually getting their students to, they'll get the students to there as needed. So, the discussions have definitely been evening hours and weekend hours, as well as getting the students there during the school day.
Thank you.
So, the council appropriated about $1.6 million from the AR, ARP funding for the hospital.
Very good. Yeah, and just to remind the Board, when the Board of Ed comes to us for building and stuff, things of that nature, we don't really have a resolution or veto or any say in that. We certainly are, they've been really good over the years coming to us for planning advice, which is appropriate, and in taking that planning advice, I know they did with the Clermont Road School and other projects over the years, and this is one of them, but it seems totally, totally a great thing to me. Anybody else on the Board have any question?
I just have one question that's not, I think that the project is a great project and everything. I'm a little surprised, does the Board have any plans to replace the tennis facilities? Because I'm surprised that they would be giving up something like that that exists.
I don't know what the answer is from the Board's perspective. The conversations that were had in relation to this was that the courts are underutilized, and they've been locked and not really taken advantage of, which is why they were willing to give up this space. As for plans for tennis courts in the future, they would have to answer that.
Okay, it's their decision.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, so we have general public comment, so I'll make a motion to open the public for any general planning comment. All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody who doesn't have a comment, one hearing night, which is L'Oreal, which will open again to the public for any discussion on that. If there's any general planning comment beside that, now is your chance. Seeing the note takers, I move to close the public.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. 287 has delivered you here, okay?
We're only going to be an hour and 45 minutes from Roseland.
I don't know what's going on lately, it's like every freaking day.
You're going to come from Roseland.
So, I talked to some of your team and gave them a little overview of what, how we could do this fairly quickly, because you've been here formally once, gave you some feedback, you came here for informal, everybody had already an agreement on the Board that your general direction was what we were looking for, and so now you can hit the highlights and tell us you complied with the staff report, so we can probably boot forward pretty quickly. Great.
Wow.
That doesn't usually happen when you sit down, does it?
No, it doesn't. I've got a one-page opening summary here for you that I was...
Well, that's the benefit that you derive from coming to us for a discussion beforehand, so now we don't hear it for the first time.
Yeah, all right, so, thank you. As everybody probably knows now, my name is Sean McGowan. I'm a partner at Greenbaum Smith &amp; Davis in Roseland, New Jersey, which is blocked by a truck accident on 287 right now. And I'm here to represent L'Oreal USA Products, Inc., with, for their application to expand their existing manufacturing facility, not a warehouse, at 100 Commerce Drive in Franklin Township. As the chairman summarized, we were here originally in December 6, on December 6, with the application to expand the warehouse, and received feedback from the Board that, you know, while they liked the overall plan, they wanted to see better execution of screening materials, landscaping, potentially a fencing and potentially a sound wall to shield the noise and visuals from the expanded facility. L'Oreal then met with the township's planner and engineer and presented them with a concept plan, and they suggested that we present it to the planning board, which we did on, sometime in January. I'm sorry, we were back before this Board informally on February 21st to provide, you know, just a glimpse of the mechanisms that were going to be put in place to screen the residents from the sound and the visuals. Since the February 21st hearing, L'Oreal's project team has developed a fully engineered site plan, which was submitted for your review, as well as the architectural documents and storm water management reports and the like. The building being shown to you tonight is substantially the same as the building that was informally presented on February 21st with one relatively minor change to the interior side of the building, where it abuts the existing building, nothing affecting the screening and sound mechanism, sound containment mechanisms that were shown that night. You know, L'Oreal is, you know, very deeply committed to creating a positive impact in the communities that they call home, call home, including Franklin and Somerset, so they're very happy that the Board, you know, looked positively upon the concept plan on February 21st, and they're very happy that the plan being presented tonight still contains no variances. With that, tonight, you're going to hear from the architect, Erica, I'm sorry, I don't know your last name.
Godin.
Erica Godin, from Ware Malcolm Architecture. She works with Claudia Bretta, who has presented here twice before to this Board. And then we are going to hear very briefly from the traffic engineer, the site engineer, and then potentially a sound engineer, if he makes it here tonight, and then we'll have a representative of the applicant to answer any questions that remain from the Board. So, if, Mr. Chairman, if you don't have any further questions?
No, it sounds good, and should your noise expert not make it? I don't know if you could represent on the record that the noise level will be appropriate, because we don't want to have to continue to view for just...
Our site engineer has the exhibits that he would be showing and can provide the basic testimony. It's actually, you know, very, you can visually see how the sound is being contained by the wall, and then there's a full report that is going to be submitted after tonight. It wasn't ready within the 10-day window, so we couldn't submit it beforehand, but there'll be a formal report to verify the testimony that will be provided by Mr. Thomas tonight, if the sound engineer should not make it in time.
Okay, sounds good.
I don't know if he's coming down 287. So, Mr. Chairman, if you have any further questions, I will introduce Ms. Godin.
Thank you.
If I could swear you in quickly?
Yeah.
If you could raise your right hand, do you swear the testimony you're going to provide is the truth, all truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
If you could state your name, spell your last name, and give us your address for the record, please.
Oh, hello, sorry, I'm holding the mic, not using it. My name is Erica Godin, G-O-D-U-N, and I reside at 302 Wood Avenue in North Brunswick, New Jersey.
Licensed professional architect in the state of New Jersey?
Yes, I am.
Okay, then you are qualified.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Before we actually get started with the testimony, do you plan to show anything from your...
Yes.
Okay, so why don't we get that set up?
I need the plug.
While you're connecting, are the plans you're showing the same plans that were submitted to the Board?
They are the same plans, plus a couple of renderings that have not been submitted previously.
Okay, perfect, great, if we could just identify those as they pop up.
Yep. My computer, which was on, is now not, there we go.
So, Ms. Godin?
Yeah.
Your firm, Ware Malcolm, and yourself prepared the architectural plans for the expansion of the building at the project site, correct?
Correct.
Great. Could you just walk the Board through a very quick summary of the changes that are proposed to be made to the site and to the building?
Absolutely.
For the building, I should say.
Okay, so, we're looking at the proposed project located at 100 Commerce Drive in Somerset. The project includes a new addition of approximately 158,000 square feet onto an existing building. The addition will be for the manufacturing of new products, as well as storage of such The addition has 10 loading docks, plus one drive-up ramp for smaller box trucks. You can see those on the plan east side of the drawing. The construction of the new addition will be precast panels to match the existing building. They won't match exactly, because the existing building has been in existence for a while, but we're going to do the best we can with that. The height of the new addition will be 50 feet from the finished floor to the top of the parapet. And these next two images will give you an overall view of the addition in relation to the existing building, from two different angles.
Just to clarify, the addition is the dark or the white?
Is the white, sorry. Okay. And then, now I'm going to show you the new renderings that hadn't been previously submitted. The first one is a view from the truck court. You can see our lovely building with the plantings that are intended.
Call that A1? Uh, well, we previously have A1, and unfortunately, I don't have it in front of me where we were, so why don't we call it A10? B1? B1? Sure.
Okay.
Ice-stakes negotiations going on.
No, it ain't. I just like it when they agree.
We've got C, D, and then the view from Dahmer Road. And that concludes the architectural presentation for today. If you have any questions?
Yeah, I just have, I have one question for you before we wrap up direct. The previous rendering that you showed, that was from within the sound wall, you know, you're not a site engineer, and you may not know exactly where the site, where the sound wall is to go, but I think you know that there is a proposed sound wall that would be behind this rendering, correct?
Yes, if we went to the other side of the sound wall, you wouldn't really be seeing the building, so we did the rendering so you could see the building.
Very good, thank you.
So, this view, you're kind of inside the wall?
Yes.
Between the wall and then looking at the new building?
That is correct.
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah.
To you.
It's okay, if there's any other, no other Board questions, I'm good.
There's a question.
Oh, you have a question?
Are you designing the wall as well?
No, that's part of the civil...
Is there an architectural design to the wall that can give us a visual of what it may look like? There are many ways to design a wall.
There are renderings of the wall that will be shown.
Okay, thanks.
Good question, thanks, Charles. Okay, I'm to your next.
Very good, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Next, we're very quickly going to place on the record testimony from the traffic engineer, who submitted a revised traffic study based on the revisions to the building. You're not going to use it, right? So, we can, we don't need to do it right now. So, Mr. Fahim, you did not testify at the first hearing, I believe?
I did not.
So, we need...
If I could swear you in quickly, if you could raise your right hand, do you swear the testimony you're going to provide is the truth, all truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, yes.
If you could state your name, spell your last name, and give us your address, please, for the record.
Yep, David Fahim, F as in Frank, David, oh, there we go, yeah, sorry, it was a little off. David Fahim, F as in Frank, A-H-I-M as in Mary, and I work in Atlantic Traffic at 30 Independence Boulevard in Warren, New Jersey, and I'm a project manager.
Thank you, Mr. Fahim. You and your firm reviewed the traffic impacts that will be created from the proposed changes to 100 Commerce Drive, correct?
That's correct.
And you submitted a report to the Board?
Yes.
Could you very quickly, please, just summarize that report for the Board's benefit?
Sure, of course. So, our office went out and actually collected data at the existing L'Oreal facility. What we had essentially done in our report is we wanted to look at a couple things, the more important one being levels of service at the nearby roadways and at the L'Oreal driveways as well. So, what we had done is taken the existing traffic generation that we observed at the site and extrapolated it based on a rate that we observed for the property for the expansion. So, what we did is applied it to a future network, and essentially what we did is compared a future without the project construction and a future with the project construction to show, really analytically and from a capacity standpoint on the roadway network, how the roads would be impacted. When it came to looking at trip generation for the site, we really only saw an increase of a little over 30 trips, which, based on research from the Institute of Transportation Engineers, which is a national standard, even NJDOT, I know it's not on a DOT road, but they classify anything less than 100 peak hour trips to not be a significant impact in traffic, and that kind of correlated to what we found in our results. When we compared the future without the project to the future with the project, we found very little impact to levels of service and vehicle delay on the adjacent roadway network and at the L'Oreal driveways.
So, you have 15 bays now, you're adding 10, so...
Correct.
It's actually nine, right?
Nine? Nine?
Nine and a ramp are being added.
All right, so essentially, essentially, let's go with 10. I don't know what the ramp is for, you know, it's still, right, can be accessed by a truck, right? So, so your 30 additional trips are per peak hour or over the course of the whole day? How is that?
Yeah, it's during the critical peak hours, so we observe...
So, 30 evening, 30 morning, or 15 and 15?
Pretty much roughly 30 evening and 30 morning, and that's total trips in and out.
Okay.
And this is a road that, you know, it's an industrial street generally to reach 100 Commerce Drive, correct?
Correct, exactly.
Yeah, no, I just want to get a clarification of their, you know, so, yeah, 30 total in or out?
Yeah, and I can give you...
Not just one way, and then, you know, yeah.
Yeah, and I can give you the exact number. So, we estimated about 28 entering trips and eight exiting trips during the morning, and four entering, 25 exiting during the evening peak hours, so on average, it's about 30 for each of the peak hours.
And just out of curiosity, as you mentioned, you know, this is not a warehouse, this is a manufacturing facility, so your products are being loaded on trucks and taken to, assuming a distribution facility. So, it is not, not a warehouse in a sense at all. So, I guess my question would be, where do your trucks generally head out, towards 287? I mean, where do they want to go? 287, okay. So, you're going to go make a left out of there, go down Veronica, probably go down Amwell, Cedar Grove to 287, north or south, or something like that? Or I suppose you could go down JFK?
Probably JFK.
JFK, straight.
They're not sworn.
Oh, no, I know, yeah, you're not sworn, but, so tell him, he can tell us.
Yeah, exactly. You say the magic words.
But, yeah, it's like ventriloquism, sort of in reverse. So, yeah, so, okay, okay, just trying to get an idea for like where you're looking at the major intersections and where you're looking at the, you know, increase.
Yeah, and also just to kind of piggyback on that, we're, again, we're not looking at a significant increase in traffic here, so if we were to be adding in additional trucks, it would be pretty common to what the corridor is already seeing today, and, you know, so with that...
Yeah, I was just trying to get to like, you know, if they're going in six different directions, then you're splitting, right? The load off of different, if they're all headed to 287, then that, we want to know that too, so that's where I was just trying to get clarification.
Understood.
Let's talk about this idea of like what's significant and not, like...
Sure.
The 18-wheelers that you're talking about, what's the typical dimensions of them? 53 feet, roughly?
Right. WB67.
So, this is where ITE is flawed in its estimation. It's falsely equating the impact of an 18-wheeler with that of a personal vehicle, which is around, what, 12, 13 feet in dimension? So, we're talking about, when you say 30 trips, that's equivalent to 90 to 100 vehicles on the roadway.
If it were, if it were all trucks.
Dimension size.
Right.
Well, you said 30 trips, I'm just making sure if it's trucks.
Sure, so, like I mentioned before, we collected data at the existing L'Oreal site, so when we created the rate, we based the rate off of the passenger car vehicles and the truck vehicles that we observed at the site and applied that to the roadway.
How many trucks are we talking?
We observed, I have it right here.
And this is just for future discussions for the Board? We often hear, hey, it's only X amount of trucks. There's a huge difference when you're sitting in traffic, when a truck is taking up 53 feet on the roadway, which could be the equivalent of three or four cars at that given time.
Sure, so when we collected the data, we observed a maximum, and this is in and out, 16 trucks during the PM peak hour, which was not as large as the AM peak hour.
Yeah.
And that equated to, when we look at the additional, we're, on average, between the peak hours, maybe about five additional trucks.
I mean, at its highest, that's at least 20 cars, the equivalent of 20 cars.
Right, but when we run the analysis, we do consider heavy vehicle percentage and apply that to the roadway network, so when it's analyzed, that is included in there.
Yeah, though, there's the number, there are the numbers, and that's how it feels when a truck is next to you on the roadway.
Understood, understood.
And when you talk about the impact to traffic, seeing an additional, that number of trucks just sitting in traffic is a huge difference than the number of cars. of trucks just sitting in traffic is a huge difference than the number of cars that we would be talking about.
Just want to point that out because we often hear, well, it's not a significant impact
when you're only looking at one truck at a time, which is equivalent to three or four cars. So just want to make note for future discussions here.
Understood.
Okay.
Yeah.
You were just the example for that.
Fortunately, our use is permitted, so.
Yes, it is, it is, totally, totally, totally.
Well, another thing is, is you mentioned that with a higher rate of in trips, right, than out?
Depending on the peak hour.
Yeah, depending on the peak hour, right? Which is somewhat, I mean, the in trips could come from any direction, right? Not necessarily 287.
No, no, no.
Could be coming from Parkway or the Turnpike and coming through North Brunswick or wherever.
Sure.
Um, it's the out trips that, you know, I want to get clarity more on, which you just did in response to Charles, very good questions.
Well, but Mr. Fahim, some of these trips are also, you know, there's going to be more employees at the site because of the larger facility, so some of them are just local trips as well from, you know, residents of the town, county, and, you know, regional.
I do have one question. These are just 18-wheelers, they're not double, right?
No, not, no, just, yeah, 67, WB67 tractor trailers, yeah.
I think we can proceed to your next witness.
Okay, great, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fahim. With that, our next witness is Mr. Ahmad Tamous from Bowler Engineering. Mr. Tamous has been sworn in before, for this hearing.
I like to swear people in all the time.
By all means, go ahead.
It's the only joy I get at these meetings. You swear the testimony going to provide us the truth, all truth, and nothing but the truth? If you could state your name, spell your last name, and give us your address for the record, please.
Ahmad Tamous, A H M A D T A M O U S, branch manager, Bowler Engineering, 10,000 Medlanting Drive, Mount Laurel, New Jersey.
And your licenses and everything are the same as last time, are all up to date?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Good. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, Mr. Tamous, after our December 6 hearing and then the February 21st informal concept plan presentation, L'Oreal charged you with fully developing the, the site and the site plan for this site, you know, which contains some very critical elements, most critically a, a sound wall and fencing and landscaping. So could you please give the board the benefit of an overview of the changes to the site?
Certainly. So what we have in front of us is exhibit A1, I believe.
B2.
B2? B2. This is an aerial exhibit of the site and the surrounding area, and it shows the current L'Oreal facility. It shows the access point to the site, which is two driveways of Commerce Drive, tow car access, one truck access, and we have an emergency access that is currently chained off of Dahmer Avenue. We do have two pockets of wetlands to the west in a wooded area, and you can see the site to the east is surrounded by similar industrial uses. To the south, similar industrial uses. To the west, we're Dahmer and residential homes, and to the north, we have residential homes and an existing Brer Road easement or right-of-way. One of the things when we presented to the board back in February, you know, and I'll go over that with the next plan, but one of the important things to note here is the derriere of this existing facility. There is an existing paved road. This area has all the infrastructure, all the utilities, the electrical, transmission line, sewer, water, everything runs in this area. And that resulted in us changing the plan from what we previously presented to the board back in February. One of the other thing I would like to mention on existing condition, part of the traffic, you know, part of this change is to alleviate some of the concerns. Currently, the trucks come in, and I believe that the township in one of the earlier meetings that it was noted that the trailers actually park on Commerce Drive, trying to get in into the site. So, you know, some of that traffic volume that Fahim indicated, that is already happening on-site, and the need for the expansion is to alleviate the staging area on Commerce Drive, bringing it to the site, but also improve the production for the facility based on the services they provide.
So, to tie things together from the architect's presentation to yours, because all utilities are there, when you, you sort of showed the new building has like a little bridge, if you will, yeah, there you go. That must get you over the utilities, right? And then your building is going on back.
Correct, so, you know, this, this will alleviate a lot of, and this is B2, exhibit B2, this is a color rendition.
B3.
B3, I apologize.
It's all right.
So, this exhibit basically is a color rendition of the site plan. It shows an overlay in the back, it shows the existing roadway that we maintained, but we kept the majority of the infrastructure in there, and basically, this will become the corridor that ties in the new building to the existing building. There was significant saving, if you recall, the plan we presented in February basically encompassed this as an enclosed figure. So that was one of the major changes between the February plan and the plan we currently have. So this is exhibit B3, it's a color rendition. It is dated October 20th, 2021, and last revised April 15th, 2024. As you can see on this exhibit, the plan is to add an additional 156,048 square foot of the building. That brings the total of the existing and the proposed building to 305,082. So, that is, I'm sorry, that is 461,130. The existing is 305, we're adding 156. So the total square footage of the both, the existing and the proposed combined is 461,130 square feet. Part of that, we are adding 64 parking spaces along Dahmer Avenue. We also closed and we eliminated the emergency access of Dahmer Avenue, and we're planning to landscape that area to bring it back to its natural condition. This area also shows that the wetland area that on the east, west side of the property has also been filled. We obtained general permits from the state, and I believe the township have records of those applications.
Yeah, so that, that wetland is a problem when it comes to overflow into Dahmer, so actually, it's, it's not obviously a high resource wetland. It is, I mean, during the last two or three inch rain we had, probably in early April, you really, Dahmer was down to one lane, so it's actually good to see that taken care of. And one of my concerns, which you've addressed, is making sure that there's a green, nice green buffer, similar to the one that's existing in front of the original building, it's dense enough that the residences on one side of Dahmer can't even really see the building.
Yep, correct.
So that's good. So that was, that really, really helps because literally Dahmer was down to one lane.
You're absolutely correct, Mr. Chairman. The, the existing wetlands were actually found because there is a low-lying area, but also the pipe that's supposed to be draining this water into Dahmer is actually undersized. So by filling the area and we're actually diverting the runoff from that area, so hopefully that will alleviate that, that condition in the future.
And, and just one note, one, one question, Ahmad. You know, there are, will be additional trees planted on-site that are actually not shown on this, so probably there will be even more screening along that area, along Dahmer, to further screen the visuals from the residents on Dahmer than what's actually shown on this plan, right?
Correct, so, you know, in one of the comments, and I believe it's the engineer letter, it's about the tree replacement calculations and the number of required trees that we are, the site is deficient on. So we looked at that, and we will provide the required number of tree replacement on-site. The area in front of Dahmer, the wooded area facing Dahmer, we'll do our best to plant that area, but because of the soil condition, the constant moisture, it might not be, it might not survive long. So we will take that into account, we'll work with the township, it's professionals, to come up with an appropriate location to provide the additional trees required to comply with the tree replacement.
Yeah, and I'm sure Mark can guide you, you know, as could I, truthfully, but I won't do it here, as to what species of trees are very tolerant of wet and constant wet soils, so that they will have not only a chance to survive but thrive. You plant a tree that doesn't like wet feet all the time, it won't survive, like cherry trees. If you plant a scarlet oak, or you plant a red maple, or like October Glory maple, they're very wet tolerant, so there's, there's certainly species that could, we, we could use to do that.
Absolutely. So that, that is, that would be one of the condition we will be complying in the latter.
Just had a question on the emergency access. You blocked that off completely?
Correct.
Is there an alternate location you are providing?
So, what we are proposing to do here, there is a second access of Dahmer here. It's existing, it's not fully paved, so what we're going to do is we're going to pave this, and we're going to chain this access, so it allows you to access that, but eliminating the other one with, didn't provide that much, honestly, and, and also provided the additional buffer from the residents, which was a requirement.
Is the, is the existing access that you're going to eliminate, is that the one with the lawn and the bollard and chain? Because it was one that I always was amazed that fire prevention let that go, because they normally will not let you put grass in an access because they don't want the, you know, multi-ton trucks sinking into it. I don't know whether that's grass pavers, it sure looks like just plain grass to me. So I was always, I was always surprised it, it got through John House, if it did, so it defuses.
So, Mr. Chairman, if you look at the aerial image, I believe this is the grass we're referring to.
Yep.
So this one, we're actually keeping, but we're going to pave this.
Pave it, okay.
But we're eliminating the one further up toward the end of the property.
Okay. I don't know if I even realized that was there, which is probably not a good thing for.
It's not visible, you have to actually, you, you need to know it's there to, to go for it.
Yeah, I drive by there, I'd be literally every day as I'm going down Dahmer to Amwell, so.
So, some of the other changes, I mentioned the, we improved the truck access, we added another lane to facilitate the movement trucks, gider trucks of Commerce Drive as soon as possible, and then we will have three ingress lanes and one exit lane, and all they're going to be controlled gated for security check-ins. The additional change, stormwater management for the site, anyone who's familiar with this area, this industrial complex was developed a long time ago, and if we go back to the aerial image, we can see, doesn't show this, but if you go back in a circle aerials, you can see that there's a stream that used to run through most of these properties. That was rerouted, constructed somehow, probably prior to DEB establish some of the regulations. And we have two existing basins that handles the majority of the industrial complex when it was, when it was approved in the past. One to the east of Jeffy Road and the other one south of Commerce Drive. Our intent is to utilize the large existing basin off of Commerce Drive to, for the volume mitigation, since it was designed to handle that runoff from the site. Additionally, we provided two bio-retention basin, one is north of the proposed building, one is to the east of the proposed building. These are small bio-retention basin, these will handle the water quality runoff associated with the imbrative surface. The water depth in these basins varies from one to two feet at most, they're a little higher than that, but they will handle most of the runoff. The water will infiltrate, go through the bio-retention, and then it will discharge into the storm sewer pipe connecting to the existing basin where the solar field is. One of the other additions, two small additions, as you can see here, there is a 2,000 square foot shed, equalization shed, that will be utilized to have some equipment and an equalization tank, and we also have these two red dots next to north of the building. These are storage tanks. They're roughly about, I believe they're about 10, 15-foot diameter, and they could be as high as 20-foot high. This has not been finalized, but these would be required as part of their operations, and that will be part of the detail we'll provide on the final plan of the resolution associated with these tanks.
Quick question, obviously not for the tanks, but for that equal, that shed, the equalization, is there any, any like, equipment noise associated with that? Or is that just sort of operating in the background?
I will have to defer to L'Oreal. No noise associated with it. One of the significant changes on this plan than what we presented back in February, we presented this gray line, which represent the sound barrier. Since then, we've conducted a sound analysis, we placed three sound sensors along our side of the property line, we did not go into the right-of-way, and roughly one here, one here, and one here, and if the acoustical engineer, given your time, he'll be able to share that, or I can share his report with the board. We've done the studies on the course of three days, they were done from April 10 to April 13, and based on that studies, we noticed that the sound level in its existing operation was slightly higher than it needed to be in its current condition. So, and then he modeled the proposed site condition with the building expansion and the location of the trailer and the loading dock. Based on his analysis, we, he extended the sound barrier toward, to the east, from where we started, all the way to the property line, and from where we started to the west, slightly to the west. The height of this wall varies from 18 feet on the west, continues 18, the highest point, I believe, is this, right in the middle of the cul-de-sac, which is 20 feet high, and then drops down to 18 again. So it's from 18 to about a 20-foot-high sound barrier that will be constructed, and we did not have the high, the height noted, 18 to 22 feet, I apologize. The highest point is going to be 22 feet, and we did not have this modeled already when we submitted the plans, so the height of the fence might require a variance, because in, in all essence, it's, would be a structure, it's a fence, I don't know if there's going to require a variance or not.
Is a sound wall considered a fence?
Yeah, I, I don't think we have any regulations that would speak to this, to tell you the truth. I, I wouldn't consider it a fence, and we actually don't have a height limit on fences anyway.
Thought they were like mostly six feet or something.
Yeah, but there's no, you can go higher, but you just need permits, so I, I don't think this triggers any variances. I can't think of any order, provision or ordinance that would prohibit this.
Okay. I appreciate it, just wanted to be, I mean, just upon the subcussion.
And again, you know, if, correct me if I'm wrong about any of this, there's two points I want to make that were different from the original plan that the board asked for. One was original plan, I believe, had parking and/or the loading docks in the back towards the nearest residence. That has now been moved to the side by Dahmer and then to the east, where I think you're showing the, the bays there. So essentially, there's going to be nothing right up against the residences, and where you have the cul-de-sac and all, you're going to have the wall. So that, that was a huge change.
And everything was moved further away from the property line, right, Mr. Tamous?
Yeah, I believe, I do not have the exact distance, but I believe around 100 feet back, further away from the resident. Everything was built closer to the Commerce.
And I don't know if it's off the. And I don't know if it's off the picture that you have here, but could you roughly indicate where the railroad line is?
So the railroad, if you're looking at it, it's this second line. So you have these homes, this void area here, this is the railroad line.
Okay. Because the railroad line is some distance.
It's, it's another 50 feet that's beyond.
And so, since the railroad line is obviously, you can't, I, I mean, it's not an active railroad anymore, right? It used to take wealthy vacationers out to East Millstone, right? I believe that's what it was used for. Every now, they will push a train through there, you know, across, just to keep the weeds down and stuff, and, and now they don't even do that. So I, I don't, can't be used anywhere, but it's.
It's gonna be a regional trail.
Yeah, that's what we were looking for, rails to trails, but you know, yeah, that would be nice. We try that, and people really don't want people like walking through their backyard. When I was in open space, that was, that's a different.
Then I keep trying.
Yeah, I keep trying, it's a great idea, but yeah, I mean, that was what it was used for. So that's a substantial buffer rate there. And since you can't go back because you don't own the railroad right away, then, or purchase it from wherever it is, I think it's Conrail, you can't, you can't really do much with that. So that's kind of just why I wanna get perspective of, is how far away that you, you are now with the not having the uses that were in the original plan back there, which are, you know, would be intensive noise generators for any residents.
Before you change, can you show us the truck movement on site? Because beyond noise, the lights from the truck would be a concern, especially where you're showing the bio retention, it's gonna be at a lower height than it would be if it was covered with trees. So can you just show us on that site plan, truck movements? The one that you had up previously, the render drawing.
So Mr. Thomas, right now you're showing the plans that were submitted, right? It's not a new exhibit?
Correct. I'm trying to see if I have the, the, the exhibit handy.
Well, I like the exhibit you had, I just want you to use the cursor to show me how the trucks will move on site.
Okay, so right now, so the trucks will come in, and this white line, that's where the existing curving is today. So we widen that up, that opens up the throat, so it's a little bit wider than it needs to be, and then we have three ingress lanes going to the site, and the trucks will either go to the existing loading area, or they will continue to the rear. And the reason for this turnaround area, if the truck makes it all the way back and realizes that all the loading areas are occupied, then they'll be able to make a full turn and exit the property without causing a traffic jam.
Thank you.
And the sound wall, obviously, will shield the light as well for many headlights from the trucks back there, correct?
Correct.
I'm just curious of this, the sound wall, is there any, what's the deafening level from active side to the passive other side?
So the, what we need to meet is the 50 decibel at night level. So at night, let me see if, okay, so this is, and I'll do my best, this is the acoustical engineer analysis sheet. The three dots represent the three location where the sensors were placed on our property. During the study, where they're placed sometime from April 10 to the 13th for three continuous days. Based on that analysis, he, the sound level were, as shown here. So you can see that some of these sound levels, in day, the limit is 65, at night it drops to 50. You can see these levels were slightly higher than they needed to be during the day. And that was consistent throughout all three days. Some days were higher than others, but I believe this, the first one, is the highest level we had. When you go to the proposed. And this is slightly rotated. So the red line, that represents the 50-foot limit that we cannot cross. The blue line on the exhibit represent the proposed sound barrier. And you can see, with the placement of this sound barrier, we were able to take back all the sand to 50 feet within our property. So these three homes were.
50 decibels, you're, you're saying, right?
Thank you, 50 decibel. So these homes were, were impacted or were impacted by the current operation, this would alleviate a lot of the sand impact on those three properties with the proposed sound barrier.
Just for my clarification with the sound on that, so what you're saying is with this proposed sound wall, sound would actually be less than it is now?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah.
About the seasonality of the measurement, do trees impact the sound? It's a rhetorical question.
They, they do not. But, and, and if Norm, Norm is the, is the acoustical engineer, and, and he will go through that in detail, but sand travels through void, so that the trees will not have any impact, whether it's in the winter or in the summer, that's.
But doesn't matter the season in which you do the sound test, right?
It does not.
Okay, thanks.
I'm not feeling it. This is probably, you, you're the last witness?
I just checked my phone to see if the, he had texted me if he was on his way, and I have not received a text.
Yeah, and I'm thinking it's looking good. I mean, we'll just stipulate that, you know, his, his report will be in the, in the.
Correct. This is a report that has been finalized, and was just finalized after the 10-day window. So it will be submitted, and, you know, your professionals will be able to verify.
I think we just got a really, really pretty good synopsis of what we needed, which is, which is.
I was personally very impressed by the color graph showing, showing how the sound is limited, it, it's very easy to understand.
No, I, I was gonna caution the board that the testimony on sound was not from a sound engineer, but it was just reporting his findings. But I, I actually didn't feel that compelled to do that, because I understood everything really well.
And just for the record, the applicant will voluntarily agree to provide that report as a condition of approval, demonstrating that the sound levels will be at a compliant level.
I didn't wanna say it myself, but yes, absolutely.
Oh. The colorized exhibit, what was, what number was that? The one that you just.
That will be B4, the colorized sound exhibit. Actually, yeah, so the, so the B4 will be the colorized, okay, that's B4, is the graphs of the current conditions?
I'm sorry, I, I should have been more clear, the, the one where you showed the sound wall and the landscaping, site plan.
That will be B5. Oh, wait, oh, that one, I'm sorry, that was B3.
Okay, so, yeah, so, so again, so what you showed on there was an extension of the wall that wasn't on the plan submitted to the board, so.
Correct.
And I'm assuming if the board was to approve it, this would be part and parcel of the approval to extend the walls as shown on that exhibit and the heights that you indicated.
That is correct.
Okay, thank you.
And the, going through the exhibits? So this would be B3, this would be B4, and this would be B5, and this would be B6, and this is the 3D color rendition of the site. This is looking at the building. You're standing in the back at the property line where the fence is, you're looking through the woods, looking at the building and the sound barrier, you can barely see it. If you move forward to the next page, this is a rendition of what the sound barrier would look like. We have some landscaping on the opposite side of the fence, I call it fence, the sound barrier. And this is as close as we can get to the material and the looks, the aesthetics of the sound barrier. It's, for all intensive purposes, I mean, it's a wooden fence. It's, it's post, that's 20 feet in high, and they come wooden slats that get inserted to buffer that, there are different material, but that's what this shows. It's natural tone and blends with the current site.
It probably denote the importance of a maintenance plan for that, if it's wood? I don't know if you wanna speak on that, not being a sound expert, but over time, how do we ensure that it maintains the barrier that it's intended for?
Obviously, maintenance is important with, with anything we do. I don't know if there's a mechanism.
So I, I would note, and this is actually one area where I don't think anyone has the knowledge to comment, but the report that will be submitted to the board notes that the inside of that wall will have a special material. It says the side facing, the truck operations should be sound absorbing, such as the material provided with the AIL sound wall, silent protector product. So it will be wood, but it will also have special materials on the inside as well. I know that doesn't quite answer your question.
No, that, that answers it, yeah.
So promise me that those aren't Arbividae that you're showing, because you get a free hedge trim from the deer up to six feet. So they need to be like, maybe either blue or Norway spruce or something like that? I mean, anything that's an Arbividae, they just, you can go through any part in the township and industrial place, or any backyard that has the misfortune of planting those. And if you don't protect them in some way, you will, you will have a very, very thin base, followed by a normal-looking tree.
So what we have is a combination of eastern white pine, Norway spruce, and red cedar.
Cedar, okay. I would lose the white pine, only because, you know, you would, you can replace those with spruce, a combination of spruce and cedar, you can use blue or Norway. The white pine, as Ted would point out, and, and is quite good at doing that, is they will lose their lower branches over time, so spruce will retain those.
Okay, thank you. Landscaping on site, as, as I've indicated, we providing a lot of landscaping, and we will provide some additional landscaping to meet the tree replacement requirements, which I think it's an additional 105 trees. So we'll work with township professionals to make it whole. Total trees on site, we have, in total, we have about 73 shade trees, 42 autumnal trees, and about 401 evergreen trees. That is what is shown on site, plus some additional shrubs and, and evergreen shrubs, roughly another 400 of those.
No, that's great, and it's fortunate you have room on the site to, you know, comply with the shade tree replacement and, and can plant them all on site, which we always like to see, you know, with that, so.
The last thing I'd like to cover is the lighting on site. You know, with any type of disimprovement, we will have wall-mounted lights, and with those, we will have about 25 of those, 25 and another 20 is about 45 wall-mounted lights on light. The light reading at the property line is zero, so there is zero encroachment, and we comply with the ordinance, and we have.
Are they LED?
They're all LED, they're all the 3000 Kelvin, they're the yellowish hue, not the white hue.
And yeah, and I assume they're downward facing, so that you're not gonna have any spillage into the, I mean, you're obviously gonna have the wall there, and you're gonna have quite a buffer, but, you know, again, to the extent that, I mean, I can say that I have a wall back in my house that protects a few of my neighbors and me from Frito-Lay. And the wall is landscaped with pine trees, Sandy took out a few of those, they replanted them, but they really didn't let. But the, the worst thing is, the light is not shoebox, and it's not LED. It's one of those old, you see, you know, back from the 70s, bulbs, and, and you do get light spillage. I don't anymore now, because my own trees have taken over, but in the non-growing season, yeah, it does, it does make a difference.
So that, that is correct, and there are LED lights, and we do have a detail of the proposed light fixture on the summary plans, if you bear with me one second. Getting closer. So these are the wall-mounted lights, and these are the wall bags or the wall-mounted lights.
Very solid, all right. Thank you.
One other quick question, just confirm one more time that trucks will not be allowed to go around the entire site.
Sorry, did you read that?
The trucks, the 18 rollers, because right now, on your existing plan, you know, we see, when you go back to the site here, truck trailers parked on the left-hand side of the image here. Just wanna confirm that trucks will not be allowed to circle the entire site, right?
Oh, I apologize, okay, so that is important, thank you. This axis that's connecting the, the cul-de-sac with the car, this is emergency access only, and this is half chains on either end. So this is not open to the public. Only the fire department have access to this road.
Okay. All right, so if, it would be helpful if you had a sign on site for the trucks denoting that, just so it doesn't become a problem?
Yeah, we'll incorporate that, and, and you can see, it's, it's noted clearly on the site plan, but that's what this line with the X presenting on, on here.
Great, thanks.
You're welcome.
All right, I think it might be time for staff reports.
Mr. Chairman, I'm sorry, I just have like two quick cleanup items.
So part of the CME letter dated.
It's a staff report.
May 3rd. Under the stormwater management comment, they, there is a mention of porous pavement, and in fact, there is no porous pavement on site. All of that was eliminated with the redesign. We do have the bio retention basins, but there is no porous pavement on site.
Okay. Well, I, I would just say that you can just note that if you plan to comply with all of CMEs, that you would just say to them that, note that fact.
And that, that's kind of the, one of the last things I wanted to bring up is, you know, Mr. Thomas, you've reviewed all of the latest review letters, most of which actually date back to 2023, but most critically, the CME engineering review letter that we received on May 3rd, and with the exception that you just noted, and anything else in your testimony earlier, which I don't think there's anything, the applicant can, can comply with all comments, correct?
That is correct.
Great, thank you.
So I just wanna know, we, we have an incomplete report from the Finger Creek Township Sewers Authority, I assume you'll satisfy those, them. What was the other one I wanted to just double-check on? Terra Canyon's letter dated April 7th, you comply with all that? I mean, the EV charging stations, you need more of, I guess, and, and.
Dated April 7th, 2023.
Two, well, mine says two.
Okay, yeah, no, that's probably right, actually, April 2022. Yeah, I mean, we have, we have compliant, well, let the engineer confirm, but we have compliant EV spaces.
Perfect. Fire prevention, that was dated more recently, additional fire hydrants, blah, 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 bollard and chain should be upgraded as a gate. That was the two main there.
That's from last year.
I, I do not recall seeing that fire department letter, but from the previous letter.
That's the one dated July 13th, 2023?
No, it's May 7th this year.
Oh, I don't think we received that one.
Yeah, there, there are two comments, additional fire hydrants are required, and some fire hydrants need to be relocated, the applicant should contact fire prevention to discuss the bollard and chain, and the emergency access of Commerce Drive and Dahmer should be upgraded to a gate, and then we reserve the right to make additional comments.
Yeah, we have no objection to that, Mr. Shannon.
And Mark, do you have anything outstanding in your report?
Yeah, I have just a few questions. So just, you have my May 6 report?
We did not receive a report from you, May 6, from May 6.
Okay. All right, so go to top of page three. So my, my question here is the, the screening, the supplemental screening, I should say, that you have behind the trees that are proposed to remain along Dahmer. Those are all deciduous, and by number, based on the, the buffering requirements, you're basically at half of the required trees there. So my question is if you would replace those with more and more closely spaced evergreen trees?
We have no objection to that.
Okay. The next question relates to the fencing, and I believe at your last presentation, I suggested this. Right now you have, the requirement is that it be a solid fence, and you have a chain link fence with privacy slats, which I believe is what you have elsewhere on the site. Do you, I, my, my, I think my suggestion was, right now you have it right up on. Do you, I think my suggestion was right now you have it right up on Dahmer. And the suggestion was to move it back behind the existing trees or maybe even behind the proposed trees. Because the thought was, right now, the chain link fencing with the privacy slats is kind of back in the forest, if you will, and not up on the road. So the suggestion was to keep that.
So if we look at the site, I believe this is the existing fence off of Dahmer. So we have, it's basically a few feet off of the existing parking spaces. So the intent is to.
Okay, because I think, I thought I read on the plans that you had it up, right up on Dahmer. But bottom line is you're saying you would agree to that, to keep it, to kind of continue that existing line.
Correct. And then when we get back to the property line, we'll place that along our property line and then come back going along the property line and then you'll tie into the existing fence somewhere here.
Okay, okay. And I believe those are my two questions. I mean, I think most of the rest of the comments are technical in nature and I don't believe they're new. So maybe if you give yourself a second to read through them, just let the board know if you have any, just generally if you have any problem complying with the rest of them.
Certainly. So under 2C regarding the loading dock, talks about whether we should extend the wall further to the west. So in essence, we already did that.
You've addressed that, yes.
Perfect.
I think 3A, I believe you just indicated you would comply, but my number is different than your number, so.
516 B710.
I have a deficit of 194.
Guys can work, you guys can work that out.
Yeah, we can work that out. We were going by the calculations in the CME letter, so I don't think.
Yeah, I mean, it'll, it'll, it'll come out in the wash. I think you will have the ability to plant what's necessary on site. I mean, if you don't, then the deficit would be made up in a shade tree commission donation or a tree, yeah.
Which is something the applicant can comply with, Mr. Thomas.
Yeah, we have no objection. We'll comply and we'll work with your office addressing the outstanding comments in your letter.
Okay, thanks, Mark. Any questions from the board for any of the witnesses before we open it up to the public? All right, and with that, I'll make a motion to open to the public for any questions on this application.
Start.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody from the public wishing to speak? One wants, twice, want to speak? Can you come up to the microphone, please?
Sir, if I could just swear in quickly, if you could raise your right hand for me. Do you swear the testimony going to provide us truth, all truth and nothing but truth? And if you could state your name, spell your last name and give us your address, please, for the record.
Winston Belmar.
Sir, if you could, just, sir, bring the mic right up, yeah, you have to speak right into the mic.
Okay. Got my name? Okay. My address is 69 Dahmer Road.
Winston.
Belmar.
Belmar. Thank you.
69 Dahmer Road. I have a question for L'Oreal. When, if everything goes through, got all permits, when you expect this overall facility, new facility to be functional?
Roughly, I mean, between getting all the permits outside the agency approval, which is another six months, maybe around this time. And then another year for build-out, maybe about a year, a year and a half, roughly.
Best case scenario, right? If everything goes smoothly and things move quickly.
Two years.
Eight.
I think two years is probably, you know, the most realistic.
Three years, okay.
Best case scenario.
Just because nothing ever goes that way.
Yeah, that's true.
Just to reinforce a comment that Chairman Morsini made. I drive along Dahmer Road every day. During the most recent rainfall that we had, I drove through like one foot of water several times, back and forth. Okay, and as I sit here listening to this dialogue, I do have flood insurance on my house, but I was speculated, but I need to increase that amount. I'm very concerned. I'm very, very concerned.
Mr. Thomas, to answer the question, could you just kind of give a high level requirement of what is necessary when anyone, L'Oreal or any other property owner, upgrades their site or improves their site with a, you know, 150,000 square foot building?
Certainly. So there are certain regulations that handle the stormwater management that is mandated by the township, state and county. So there are, and in this case, the DRCC. So we have four levels of approval. We have to obtain for stormwater management. The stormwater management for the site. Currently, when it rains, the water sits in the west side of the property. There is an undersized drain, it stays there, it doesn't drain. And then when it overflow, Dahmer is the, what gets released. So by, in essence, by proposing this improvement, we are managing the stormwater management runoff, but also we're directing it away from Dahmer and taking it toward Commerce, where the large basin will handle most of the runoff. This should alleviate a lot of the concerns and eliminate the bonding. And we have the permit from DEB to fill that wetland area that's causing this bonding in that area.
So in short, these improvements will not only, you know, improve the drainage on the L'Oreal property, but should also improve the drainage from the off-site properties as well along Dahmer Road there.
Correct.
Well, I hope so. I'm ready, I hope, I'm looking at it from a very optimistic stance. But I'm there, I live it every day. I mean, we talk a lot here about the decibel levels. I can speak to that every night. I mean, like from ocean requirements, what is it, 90 decibels or 50?
50 at night, 65 in day.
The plant is still noisy, very noisy.
Well, I think there was testimony that, yeah, actually.
I live it. Don't tell me, I live at 69.
The testimony was that, yes, at night, there's actually, it's too high right now. And that these improvements will bring the noise back within the requirements.
Why would it do that, though?
Through the engineering.
I'm talking about real life situation now. My experience is, you know, would this augment the situation? And that's my concern.
So the, the design of the site, the layout of the site, we took that into consideration. The truck cords, most of the loading operation, which is the heaviest sound generator, it's toward the east side of the property where the other similar uses are. And that will blend with the other noises alleviated by there. Also, keep in mind that you have Dahmer Road currently between the site and the residential homes on Dahmer. And that road have trucks, cars, that generates a level of noise that we do not have control over.
I understand that.
So, you know, one of the things I think Winston is talking about is probably not so much the noise that's emanating from the new, but maybe what's emanating from what's there now. Because you can, you're going to build that sound while you just talked about all the engineering controls you're going to do. Question that I would have, and it's not really related to this application, so I can't, I can't connect the two legally. But think about whether or not anything can be done to the existing sound generation on the existing building, protect that in some way, whether that be something on your roof or something around the existing equipment. You know, probably doesn't need anything more than administrative approval for the township, it's not a site plan, it's not. But, I mean, just think about that because I'm, you've convinced me that what's happening with this building is going to be within requirements and in fact improve the current situation. What I'm not entirely convinced is that everything that is existing with what's associated with this will, with existing conditions now, will, will totally be mitigated just because this, because, I mean, let's face it. I don't know when this, this existed when I moved in 25 years ago. So things weren't the same, right? Engineering techniques weren't the same, codes weren't the same. So just think about whether you can do anything to help people like Mr. Belmar with the existing. Because I know where his house is and it's going to, it's more the existing.
You know, I really appreciate your comments. You know, I'm looking at it from the perspective of improving overall quality of life. I'm not, I mean, I understand business, you want to expand your business, you want to make more money. But I can't really live within a facility where you see a denigration of the quality of life. And, you know, I'm experiencing it. A lot of people come back and they talk to me, give me feedback. I invited some of them to come to this meeting. They don't show. They don't show. You know, but I live it. I know what's going on. Now, the question I would have, we talked, I think, I don't know your name. You asked a few questions about, about traffic, you know, and my concern is I, sometimes I see trucks going down on Dahmer Road and making turns going down probably off of Bennett.
Would be a bad place. I mean, there'd be no reason for a truck from this facility to go that way.
Trucks going that way, I don't know, but I've seen trucks going that way.
Yeah, I mean, there'd be absolutely no good reason for any truck from any facility on Commerce, whether it's L'Oreal or any other facility that's there, to go any other way than Sound Claude. I mean, the access is right there. I mean, you'd have to make a bunch of turns. Bennett's Lane is one lane, like for a tractor trailer and a good part of it. That's old Bennett's Lane, by the way, not Bennett's Lane that goes out to 27, so, yeah.
Well, I've seen them. Sure, I've seen them. You know, I am a good neighbor, you know, I don't want L'Oreal to feel I'm not. But I'm all for them improving and extending the facility. And not denigrate the quality of life, noise level. I mean, this water containment facility in itself, there, I spoke about it last, I think in December. There are additional issues.
And to be fair, I don't think you've shown any noise tests near his place of residence or along that road.
The exhibit that we showed had noise everywhere. At most, you were probably paying attention if you could show it again.
He should show the full thing then to verify.
You were probably focusing on the back of the property, but it.
No, he was in his exhibit. He was focusing on the back.
Right.
I think he did point it out, three houses.
The three houses off of the back of the property where the railroad is. So, and red is extremely high, you're going to be in the red. The sound level, based on the placement of the monitors, you're roughly in the green. So you're not within, you're not exceeding the limits of what's allowed by DEB. And regarding the noise, and I'm sure Mark is aware of this, the, if there is a noise complaint, the residents could reach out, I believe it's the Health to the County.
No, they would reach out to township zoning, I mean, zoning, township wouldn't force that, right?
No, we don't force it. It would be Health Department.
Yeah. Because they, that's subject to DEB, so they file the complaint, goes to the Health Department, they do the study and then if in fact there is a concern, then they'll mitigate it. Because they are required to comply with the DEB standard.
Okay, I hear you. I suck it up now. I'm living experience. I mean, you're the engineer, I suck it up now.
Can you scan up, just scroll up a little more, just so we can see the full thing? No, go down towards Dahmer area. Okay, so it's still green. All right, thank you.
Yeah. So, I mean, I know what I'm experiencing now. We have a major expansion, you know. I don't expect my quality of life to denigrate it. There are issues now. And I want to be a good neighbor. I am a good neighbor.
Well, I think, I think that the testimony and the plans that were developed, you know, really at the direction of the board have taken great care to make every effort so that your quality of life is not further denigrated. You know, it complies with all requirements of the township, which are in place. Those requirements are in place to ensure the quality of life of the residents. And the board pressed us at that December 6 meeting to do better. And we hired the sound engineer and are building a very wide, very high sound wall to make sure that we are bringing the property into compliance from a noise perspective. So, you know, we completely understand your concerns and, you know, please appreciate all the efforts that have been made over the last six months in order to hopefully not denigrate your quality of life.
I really do appreciate. The last meeting I attended, I think it was the December meeting. But, you know, I'm just concerned. The noise level has been very, and.
Well, I think we're at the point where we have to just say, okay, we have to take the applicant's testimony at face value. And they've admitted that the noise levels are higher than they thought they would be. And for that reason, are extending the sound wall and doing these other mitigations. And Winston, the only thing I can tell you is if they fail to comply, then, then, then by all means, we'll report it and to the township health and there is a remedy. You know, at this point, I can only take their testimony at face value. I have no reason not to believe it and they're noise expert. And I realize it may not be comforting to you to say, oh, you know, it's 50 decibels. We don't really know what 50 decibels all the time is, right? I mean, I'm not saying your concerns are invalid or, you know, if living with it is very different than abstract. We sit up here on the board, but we'll make, we'll do our best to make sure that.
Appreciate it.
Seeing no one else from the public, move to close.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any other questions from the board, any witnesses of this applicant?
Just one question. So the, the sound or the noise report, does that detail the construction of the wall to some degree?
I'm sorry, go ahead.
It does not. So the resolution compliant plan will show construction detail. The wall will have to be designed by a structural engineer. But they only speak about the height, the construction, the material that is in essence left to the applicant.
Okay, but there was some discussion before about there being some type of sound absorbing material on the inside and then the outside. So I guess my question is this, you know, if, again, if the board approves this, what they're approving is what's on the plan. So you can take basically the testimony and whatever the specifications in that report and somehow reflect that in details on the site plan.
Correct. These walls, there are handful of companies that actually specialize in this.
Okay, yeah, not for the level of construction permit, but at least as far as its height and the manner of its construction and its sound absorbing qualities can be reflected, reflected in some way as a detail on the plans.
Correct.
All right, thank you.
Okay. Sean, do you have anything you want to summarize for us?
No, well, yes, just a brief statement. You know, I think I kind of just stated it in response to Mr. Belmar's question that, you know, your job is to make sure that even on a fully complying plan, that it is doing everything that it can to minimize the impact to the town, the county and the wider region. And, you know, we were somewhat surprised on December 6 when we came in here and, you know, we were met with some resistance on what was going on at the back of the property or the proposed improvements at the back of the property because we were fully compliant. But, you know, at the board's direction, you know, L'Oreal had their professionals take a very hard look at the site. And it turned out there could be some quality improvements made to the site that L'Oreal is very proud to incorporate it into their proposed plan. They think it's a better site overall. And, you know, as they've, they've said, they're very proud to be a corporate citizen of Franklin and, you know, hope to continue that relationship for long into the future.
And, you know, got to thank, thank L'Oreal for, you know, the compliance with it. So, yeah, I mean, I think you hit the nail on the head. A compliant plan is not necessarily the best plan. It can be technically compliant. It can be technically compliant, but as, you know, we can shape it to be the best plan. And I think that's what the board input did. To your credit, you came and took it. You came and talked to us before you, we wanted, we, we had this hearing, and I think that made this go a lot smoother, and the board had a good understanding, and you had a good understanding what direction, because there's a cost involved to paying all of you to go and, and then do a plan that we, we dissect and, and don't approve here. We didn't have that situation, so very much appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All right, with that...
Would you want me to go through the notes of what was discussed tonight, just to clarify? Might, could help form a motion?
Yeah. I could make the motion, and then you could maybe add to it. Let me, let me, let me take a stab at this, and then you can add anything I don't, I don't have, as I do it off the top of my head, which is always the way I do it. So I'll make a motion to approve with the condition that all the staff reports are complied with, including the ones that are outstanding from various outside agencies. The tree, the replacement calculations get worked out. That the noise report from the noise expert who, I might as well text him and tell him to turn around, is included in the plans as well as the sort of the construction detail that Mark asked for or the, the parameters of, of the, of the actual sound barrier. What else did we have? Those were the major things, the trees, I think we got that.
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah.
Uh, one thing I didn't highlight in my opening, but is very important. We highlighted it when we came back at the February meeting, but I didn't formally place it on the record tonight, although there was a letter submitted. Previously, L'Oreal was asking for a phased approval.
Right.
That's been eliminated. The approval that we're asking for tonight is preliminary final for the entire site.
Yeah, and that was one of the things I think we discussed with you back in December, that we didn't like that bifurcated thing. So that's, that's good. We, we understand that. Mark, take over, because those are the major things.
Sure. Well, you had made recommendations for substituting certain plants. Charles had made the suggestion about adding signage to inform trucks that they cannot go around the building. They're going to replace the deciduous trees along to the rear of the buffering with, with more closely spaced evergreens. They're going to place the fence along Dahmer to the rear of the buffering in line with the existing fence. The wall will be 18 feet, going up to 20 feet in the middle, back down to 8 feet, 18... 22 feet? Oh, 22 feet. Thank you. And they will extend it as per Exhibit B3. And I think as far as trees go, I think the testimony was that they're going to take the, the maximum effort to meet the, the replacement value as much as possible, and then the payment in lieu will only be basically as a last resort if they can't meet it in full. But they'll have to make an effort to the satisfaction of staff to do as much as possible.
Sounds good. So that's, that's my motion.
Second.
Mark, did you not ask for the specs on the sound wall?
Yeah, that's going to, that's going to come. I, I did put that in, specs on the sound wall, and, and the whole noise report, which if the noise expert made it tonight, he would have testified, but, you know, your engineer did a great job hitting the highlights, so thank you for that. Yep.
Okay, so we had Mike firsted and Charles second, okay? Okay, Councilman and Barrison?
Yes.
Theodore Chase?
Yes.
Robert LaCourte?
Yes.
Jennifer Wagnall?
Yes.
Charles Brown?
Yes.
Robert Thomas?
Yes.
Chairman Mercini?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and to the board. It's been a pleasure working with you on this, and, and we look forward to resolution compliance and then ultimately building the project.
My question?
Thank you.
And I hope this serves as an example to other applicants that we have that are maybe not as willing to listen, that things can go quite smoothly when, when the people come to the board and we have a discussion, so. I'll put that out on camera for you. Okay, before we all run away, we had a minor subdivision committee with myself, Bob Thomas, and, and, and Mark Healy tonight. Mahir asked to be excused, because she's the other member of the minor sub, and Mark is going to give us a synopsis of that.
Yeah, so just to remind the board as well, that this is a, per our by-rules, when it's a minor subdivision that doesn't require any variances, it goes to the minor subdivision committee for approval, not the full board, but we do have to report the committee's actions to the board. So the committee reviewed a, a two-lot subdivision that's been approved, I think, at least three times prior. It's a two-lot subdivision on Garfield in the R10 zone. The lots, I think because of, mostly because of, they're both on, they're both on septic and sewer, are much larger than required. One's about 20,000 square feet, the other one is almost 40,000. I think because of separation requirements from other septic fields, et cetera, they had to make the lots large. It was approved under the, previously under the name of Warren Capital, and then most recently under Northview Associates. Again, it's basically, it's a two-lot subdivision, residential, obviously, on the, along Garfield, just, just to the, just after you pass 287. And the board approved it with certain conditions related to limiting the amount of, the, the limit of clearing and trying to maximize the buffer from 287. Basically, the report.
Yeah, so there, there's just a couple of things that I want to add to what Mark said. So there's, it's an R10. One lot is 37,000, the other lot is like 20,000, so they well exceed R10. The concern I had was, what of the person whose lot is hard up against 287? I mean, so I was going to have Mark ask the applicant if they can actually, they have room to shift. So, you know, the, the lots away, so, I mean, they've got more than enough. You know, they can just shift the lot line or whatever. See if they can do that. The limits of disturbance are, you know, basically not much more than the building area of the house, which is not realistic. So what, what we talked about was making sure that they will comply with the tree replacement when inevitably they have to clear more. I mean, this would be like placing a house down in the middle of a forest. We've just cleared the area barely enough for the house. It's not practical. So for that reason, we know they're going to clear more, so they're going to have to come back and comply with that, and to actually make them comply with their limit of clearing for the house closest to 287 to maximize that buffer. There is no sound wall. Unlikely they would provide it for a two-lot subdivision, because it wouldn't be worth doing it, probably for the cost. So those questions still need to be answered. But I don't believe there's any variances, otherwise they would have to be before the board. So with that, you know, I, I mean, I suggest we approve it with those conditions, but because there's only two lots, and they both well exceed lot area.
Yeah, and just procedurally, so I did look in the board, no, the committee, you did adopt a resolution when this went before you previously.
Yeah.
So then, so I, I've already updated and sent it to Christine. So we'll put it on the agenda for the next meeting. Again, this would be for the minor subdivision committee to approve, and those conditions are in there already.
Yeah. Because this is, like Mark said, the third time, and so that already should probably tell you something about the applicant. Just saying.
They're at the finish line.
They're at the finish line each other time, too. Ted?
Well, I just remember that the, the general condition in this area is it's R10 if the property has water and sewer. And typically, the properties lack one or the other of those. I think mainly sewer, but...
These are on septic, yeah.
Yeah, and, and well...
These are on septic, so 20,000 is the minimum, really.
Yeah, and the other lot is, is, again, much bigger, but, but that's why they comply. They had to, yeah.
All right, and I think that's why we, we normally don't do a separate resolution for a minor sub. I think it's good in this case to get all this, like, on, on paper for this particular applicant, and given the history that they've been close to the finish line a few times and not quite gone there, maybe there's a reason for that. So the more that's memorialized, the better.
Yeah, so we'll, again, we'll get it back to the minor subdivision and then get it to the applicant, and they'll have to abide by those conditions.
Okay. Well, yeah, I mean, yeah, Mahir could, was, could be here tonight. She's the other member.
Well, I think, but I don't think she can vote, right? Because she didn't, it would only be the two of them. And technically, it only has to be one of them. Right, Peter?
About the resolution, yes.
You got a choice. Anything happens to me or Bob, we'll, frankly, protect it. So we're, we're done. Our next meeting is when? June?
Is July 10.
Yeah.
So I know there was some question. I usually try to write real big across the email, like, this meeting is at Route 27, all the rest of them until July 10. On your calendars that you got in the beginning of the year, I have you for July 3, because I really wasn't thinking. So we are going to reschedule. It's not going to be a special meeting. It's just going to be rescheduled to July 10 and then July 17, right after it. June... Yeah, June 5. So it'll be June 5 and June 19. And I believe for the planning board, we're kind of got a lot going on, but we have a lot up in the air, too, just so you know.
Unfortunately, I'll be out on the 10th, family cruise, so...
On the 5th? You're not going to be here?
On the 10th of July.
Oh, the 10th.
I just want to put it on record that I'm not, like, skipping those intentionally.
Right, no, I think you sent me an email when I sent that.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
June 5, you will not be here?
I'll be scheduling my cruise on the 10th as well.
Wait, you're going to be out? No.
Yeah, he had said that. He had told me, so.
Who's going to chair? Well, who would chair if they're both going to be out?
No, I'm just kidding.
Oh. Well, he said, he said...
He told me. I didn't know he was kidding.
Come on.
All right.
Now, you, you, she was going to get you guys.
No, I just said who's going to chair. I guess Ted or Bob will have to chair.
Yep, you are correct.
All right, so make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Have a great night.